I'm all set.
All right, we're just about ready. Yeah, we'll let Phil sit down and stretch out. Tell me when you're ready, Phil.
No rush, though.
You're ready? All right. Good evening, it's Tuesday, May 14th of 2024. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting. The first order of business would be the roll call. Clerk Kristen.
Okay, Jensen. Peyton.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
You're lucky.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Wasnak Scanlon.
He must be absent and excused, so we have 11 alders present.
All right, thank you Candy. We are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. And the next item would be public comment period. I have a few people signed up here. And we'll go with Sarah. Come on up. It is. Spin the wheel. And then just push the button there and the red light will come on.
Hi, everybody, Sarah Esman.
And you can adjust it to...
How's that?
Push the button, there it is. Okay.
The red light is on.
You're good?
Okay. Sarah Esman, neighbor over on North Forest Street. And I'm here with my neighbor and friend Sharon about Stoughton Juneteenth, which is coming up on June 23rd. This is where you pick up your pens. June 23rd, Sunday, from 1:00 to 4:00. And Sharon is going to speak in a little more detail about the event. But I am here because I understand that while the city is working on a DEI plan, some of us are actively creating spaces and avenues for equity and inclusion, like Juneteenth. So I'm seeking some city support through the set-asides that have been made around DEI for this event, which is annual. And we are specifically looking this year for some support to continue to make the event free for any attendees. Last year, we did receive 250 guests, all the way from Janesville in the Beloit area to celebrate Juneteenth. We'd like to keep it free, so we're looking for $2,500 to cover and offset some of the food and refreshments, as well as a couple of tents. We are not in a city space this year. We're at Stoughton United Methodist Church, who's opened up their lower level and grounds for this event. And we have three dance and music performances this year. We have two service orgs, Kiwanis and Rotary have joined us and are going to be having some family fun activities that they're doing there. So just wanted to bring this to your attention and try to find out what the process might be for securing some annual support for this Stoughton event. I know this is a comment period, but I'm closing with an ask. Thank you for considering the ask.
All right, thank you. And then Sharon, did you want to come up next?
Hello, I'm Sharon Mylan Bartlett, also a community member. I live on Kings Lynn Road. As Sarah mentioned, we are helping plan the event. It's an annual event. It's taken place several years already. And last year, we were very pleased with what we were able to put together in a comparatively short amount of time. This year, I just wanted to invite everybody to come and join us. It is from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Stoughton United Methodist Church. We have a variety of activities planned. Some will be indoors, some will be outdoors, things including bouncy houses. Artists will be there. It will incorporate food, music, truly something for everyone. We would welcome your presence. And we do need volunteers, so please let me know if anybody has an hour or two and we'll be able to further support the event. Anybody have any questions? It is Saturday, excuse me, Sunday, June 23rd. Other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then next, we have Joanne. Is the light on?
How about that? Here we go. I'm Joanne Grassman. I own the building at 501 East Main Street and operate Grand Inspired out of that building. I'm here to speak to the proposed ordinance 70-204, the municipal parking lot lease being considered to support the development of property at 211 South Water Street. As someone who's restored a dilapidated old downtown building, I can express some admiration for the vision and dedication shown by the developers for this project. I also enjoyed support from the city for my projects, and I know that without that, some projects would not have happened. So I'm appreciative of efforts as well that the city has made to help the developers and Mr. Oler. I also understand the frustration of the 144 people who signed the petition and may see this as favoritism for one person. I've studied the plans that have been submitted to the city. There could be others, but those are the ones that are public at this place. I believe the outcome could go one of two ways. It could become a beautifully restored building that adds vibrancy and contributes value to downtown, or it could become a property that profits a landlord, gives a small income stream to the city, but degrades the downtown and makes it a less desirable place to be. I'm going to reference the City of Stoughton's comprehensive plan that was adopted by this body on July 11, 2017. 211 South Water Street is located in the Central Business District. That's defined on page 54 of the plan. The Central Business designation generally encompasses all parcels between Page Street and the railroad tracks east of 7th Street and from Jefferson Street to Washington Street, the one block north and south of Main Street. The plan outlines recommendations for rehab and redevelopment in the Central Business District on page 55 of the plan. I'm going to read a few of them to you. Promote the expansion, retention, and upgrading of specialty... This is for the downtown, by the way. Promote the expansion, retention, and upgrading of specialty retail, restaurants, financial services, offices, professional services, and community uses through marketing, investment, and incentive strategies. There is something about parking in there. Encourage the redevelopment within the downtown to increase foot traffic. Provide a built-in market for goods and services. Continue to renovate and restore historically significant buildings. There are detailed downtown design standards that include high-quality building materials, strongly featuring masonry and glass, careful treatment of all four sides of a building with special attention devoted to street frontages and facades which face into parking areas, sidewalks, and alleys. And of particular note, a transition of land uses within most buildings from retail and/or services uses on the ground floors to office and residential on the upper floors. Where buildings are dedicated primarily to residential uses, the ground floor should be devoted to commercial uses. Where ground floor commercial uses are not provided, the remaining areas should be devoted to gathering spaces or residence services. Any ground floor residential should be elevated a minimum of four feet above adjacent sidewalks and streets for privacy. The economic development section of the plan also provides recommendations. On page 144, it says maintain and enhance downtown Stoughton as the center of unique shopping and entertainment opportunities and professional and government services. Actively encourage infill of vacant parcels and redevelopment. Support mixed-use development projects that integrate non-residential and residential uses into high-quality unified places. Support proposals that provide a range of commercial development opportunities while considering the importance of preserving Stoughton's unique small-city character and the downtown. I'd like to compare that with the proposed project. In this project for which this ordinance is being considered, every available space on the first floor has been granted a variance to be residential, including the front of the building where pedestrians will walk within a foot of someone's living room or bedroom. The pictures in the packet you received tonight shows a proposed exterior that looks great. That is this one. However, it's not what one will see when the project is done. The picture shows expansive windows on the front of the building as if it is a commercial space. The plan approved, however, for the variance, has two apartments in the front with a simple entry door and two small windows. The south-facing side shows a spacious area with windows. In fact, this is an alley with the only door to those street-level apartments and the single window in that apartment opening to the alley. These apartments don't have, at least according to this plan, windows or egress in the bedrooms. The north-facing side will actually have vehicles parked 48 inches from the only door and the single window to the micro apartments. The back of the building shows garage-door-like areas. These are actually filled in. These apartments also have their only door and the window open to the parking lot. Your packet also includes a new location for the dumpster. However, on the drawing, this appears to be on city property. Stoughton's comprehensive plan clearly states in multiple places that downtown development should have commercial space at street level with residential space on upper floors. Yet this project was given a variance that clearly contradicts the comprehensive plan. I would also note that the examples provided in that variance request were given prior to the adoption of the plan. Again, this project could, could add vibrancy to the downtown if it was brought into alignment with Stoughton's comprehensive plan. If left as is, it is at best a lost opportunity for the council to support downtown. At worst, it becomes a stain where people don't want to live and crammed-in residents live their lives in the alley, the parking lot, and the sidewalk. I would offer that the council has an opportunity tonight to support this developer, add to the city coffers, and support the vibrant character of our downtown that everyone loves. What I'm asking, amend the proposed ordinance to include that, one, money generated from any leasing downtown parking be allocated to a fund to be used for downtown beautification. Number two, parking leases may be made only if the proposed project follows the recommendations of Stoughton's comprehensive plan, again, that this body approved. In this case, that street-level space be used for commercial purposes that adds to a vibrant downtown. Thank you.
Brown is registered only to oppose item number 10. And then I have, next speaking would be Joe. Come on up. Looks like the microphone's on.
Do I have a time limit, Mayor?
It's three minutes. But we're pretty generous around here.
Sounds good. Welcome, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the time to get before you. I don't have a ton of time here because I've got to get to Fitchburg Common Council meeting, which starts in a half hour. But I just wanted to pop in and introduce myself, say hello. My name is Joe Maldonado. I've been on the Fitchburg Common Council since 2020, currently a candidate for Wisconsin State Assembly. I just want to thank the folks who I've met and spoken with on the phone, and also for the mayor for taking some time both to talk to me about issues in the city, as well as take me, you know, on a small tour around the city. I'm a longtime youth worker. I've worked in after-school programming, as well as in pre-college programming, university, and more recently, kind of doing systems-level work with United Way and now with the University of Wisconsin. Really passionate about ensuring that everyone's voice is heard. I think our systems can do a better job of bringing in, you know, folks, especially folks from underrepresented backgrounds, where we're thinking about really important issues that affect our community. Those that are most affected by it should be at the table and have a voice. And I've had a lot of experience doing that in my work. Mainly, I just wanted to get in front of you and offer the opportunity to connect one-on-one. I plan on being in Stoughton regularly and really just be there to listen, learn, and develop my understanding of what the needs are and how folks at the state level can be a support for the issues that are here. So, you know, if you haven't received a call or a text from me, expect one. And I will probably see you all at the Set in My Parade this Sunday. And I'm looking forward to connecting with you, so that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all I had, signed up. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up.
I had registered online.
Oh, I didn't see it, but come on up.
My name's Laura Davis, and my husband Rich and I own a building on, at 174 East Main Street, and we have two businesses in that building. And I would like to make some comments about the impact that the parking plan, the municipal parking plan to lease the spots on the north side of that building that Joanne just talked about. So, we, on our main floor, we make monitors for beehives, but our second floor is an Airbnb apartment. We call it B's on Main. It's been fully renovated at significant expense, and we opened our business in May of 2023. One of the really nice benefits to our clientele is that we have parking at no charge among the various surface lots in the downtown area. Always before the people come to check in, I send them a map that shows the closest ramps, and it's been working out really well, well enough. Because we host overnight guests, we have to rely on the surface lots around town because street parking is limited to two hours during business hours, and parking overnight is illegal between 3:00 and 5:00. Just an aside, it seems that overnight restriction is presumably for snow removal, but some of my guests have gotten tickets overnight in the summer. But, you know, I just reimburse them. The Town Hall parking lot is close to our building, it's across the street, but it's not available for parking during Saturday farmer's markets, and this is when most of our guests are on weekends, usually long weekends. The municipal parking ordinance would be highly inconvenient for our guests if they're burdened by either not having spaces available, particularly on weekends when presumably renters would be home and using those spots, and then having to move their cars between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. could be a major inconvenience, or not being able to find a space in walking distance. The inconvenience or inconvenient or unavailable parking could affect the reviews that our guests give us about their experience, and that could really affect the success of our business. And also, there's a financial consideration. Most of our guests spend their entire visit within the city of Stoughton. They patronize our stores, restaurants, galleries, and event venues. Everybody loves it, I promise. An important consideration that highlights the unfairness to our guests of the loss of this essential parking option is that where, my guests are already paying 20% per day occupancy tax charged by the city of Stoughton. I would argue that the financial contributions that our guests pay to the city in the form of this occupancy tax should assure that they have convenient parking at no charge. It's doubtful that people renting the apartment would be paying $30 a day each day for privilege of parking there, and for these reasons, we oppose the proposed ordinance.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll go into the agenda. We have communications and presentations, and it is Set in My Week, so we're hoping to see all of you out and about this week. There's a proclamation in the packet. The kickoff dinner was last night, and then there's activities that are beginning Thursday night. There's a play, which I'm making an appearance in the play, so if you want to make fun of me, come to the play. They'll be showing it Thursday, Friday, Saturday this weekend. And then also, you know, the canoe race. There's activities going on and the parade on Sunday, so we hope to see you down there. And then the next item I had on here is, I just wanted to quickly go through some slides, especially for some of the new members of the council, and it's a good review for others. And I'll go through it really quickly, but it's more of a reference for you. And then when I'm done, Attorney Mathie has some slides he'll go through. So some of these items you can find on our website, but I figured I'd just put it all on one document, so if he needed to make some quick contacts or he had some questions, you could find it. So the first one just kind of basically explains the role of the mayor, and basically, you know, in the government system, you have the executive, you have the legislative, and you have the judicial. So the mayor would be the executive, and the city council would be the policymakers. So you make policy and we do the day-to-day operations. So that's kind of all outlined here under the mayor responsibilities, and some of them you've already seen. We'll be doing some committee appointments tonight. We work with our department heads and with city council members to prepare the budgets, and I work between the city and other governments. We have two organizations that we're members of for lobbying. That would be the Daines County Cities and Villages and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And we advocate for the cities on a county and a statewide level on issues that affect us. So we, our lobbyists are in contact, and we do a day at the Capitol. Stoughton Utilities has lobby groups as well, so they go to the Capitol as well as Washington, DC. They go to the federal level. We also, as a mayor, am ex-official on the committees, which means I attend the committees, I get to vote. I don't count toward the quorum of the committee, but certainly I try to make as many meetings as I can and provide you the information that you need to make good decisions. And you can just kind of see some of the other assignments that I have. I won't go through them all. This one here kind of summarizes our different departments, and you can see that we basically have a director in each of these departments or a superintendent. And a couple of things that kind of stand out, recently, we combined the EMS and the fire department, so we have one director or one chief that covers both. And we not only cover the city of Stoughton, but we also cover parts of the townships as well. And then we're a member of MABUS, which is Mutual Aid, so we work with other municipalities, especially if there's a large event, and there's really no money that exchanges hands for those supports. So we provide quite a bit of fire support on the MABUS end. We receive some support, especially on the EMS end, if we get backed up on calls. Oftentimes, Oregon or McFarland will come and assist us if we get two or three calls in a row. Police and Fire Commission, their responsibilities is outlined here, so they do the hiring of the officers and the certified firefighters. The EMS are hired by the HR department, like the rest of the staff. And as I mentioned, the mayor is responsible for day-to-day operations. Here, I kind of listed all of our buildings and the directors in the buildings, so if you need to contact somebody, feel free to do that. We encourage you all to tour our buildings if you have time. Obviously, everybody, you know, has other commitments other than serving. They have work, they have home, they may have kids to deal with. So it's difficult to get to all the buildings, but if you have an opportunity or if you can attend one of the committee meetings, that's a really good opportunity to at least understand what the other committees do. And then at a future time, if you want to switch committees during the reorganizational meetings in April, you'll have an understanding of what each one of the committees do. Roles and responsibilities for staff are kind of guided by our handbooks and our policies. We have state and federal laws, and then our local ordinances, which we'll talk about tonight. And then, you know, what we try to do is recommend what we believe is in the best interest of the city as whole. Sometimes when that happens, it's going to possibly affect others in a way that they might not think is positive, but we certainly try to do what we think is in the greater interest of the city and do things for the right reasons. You're encouraged to contact department heads. You can contact them by email is a good way of doing it. You know, if you CC me, that gives me an opportunity to follow up and make sure any questions that you might have get answered, so I would encourage you to do that. As I mentioned, if you want to take tours, you can take tours. Some of you, I think, have done ride-alongs, especially with the police department. Public Works is also a good one in the winter. If you want to plow snow, they'll throw it in a truck and let you ride along, and you can kind of see what a day in the life of it is with city staff, so they love to do that and show you around. We utilize many different methods for communication, and I kind of listed them here, and there's probably others that I missed. But if you have ideas on how we can better communicate, we're always open to improve that. And as I mentioned, we're part of various lobby organizations. Of course, we have mugshots of the city council members on our website. We're still missing one, we'll get Sarah on there. And that's basically all I had for that. And then the last slide just basically shows kind of when the meetings take place. The Committee of the Whole is something that we'll be doing in June. We have a date that, I think it's June 7?
Thursday, June 6.
June 6?
Thursday, it's on a Thursday.
For the Committee of the Whole, and we're going to discuss the American Rescue Plan act money that we have, so make sure you have that on your calendar. We would really like to be able to make some decisions that night. And for a Committee of the Whole or a council meeting, we need to have eight members in order to have a quorum. We need two-thirds of us to be there in order to be able to have a meeting and take action. Packs are generally posted the Friday before the meeting. If you're going to be absent for a meeting, it's really helpful if you contact the clerk and myself so we can make sure we do have a quorum. And then the committee, and meeting times are determined by the chairperson. Most chairpeople seem to be reasonable, so if you have a conflict, you're driving from Madison to get home for a committee meeting, they might be able to push it back for you if you let them know in advance. Most of our votes are a simple majority. Sometimes we have to vote on things that take a two-thirds majority, and we'll try to point that out when that happens. And, you know, really, the biggest thing is to treat each other and others how you want to be treated with respect. We don't always agree on everything, but we want to be reasonable, and we all live in the same community, so it's really important. And I'm really pleased at the way that this council has been conducting business the last several years. There's been some late meetings, and we can all get a little testy when it gets late and we get tired or hangry, but I think for the most part, everybody's really kept it together really well, and we've really been able to accomplish a lot of great things in the city of Stoughton. As I mentioned, the council is a policymaker, so your responsibility is to make changes to ordinances and resolutions and policies, and it's our responsibility to execute your wishes. And then I also put a link on here for city council rules that kind of go above and beyond what I included in the packet here. So I know that was kind of a lot in a short time, but I want to at least give you guys something to reference. Are there any questions? Too much, not enough? All right, let me queue up something here. And this is for Attorney Mathie. And I don't know if you want me to click through them, just tell me what you want me to do, or are you just going to talk?
I'll just talk. You can sort of scroll through as I move along. I'm just going to try to hit some highlights tonight on some ethics issues like open meetings, parliamentary procedure ethic, and public records. I think you've all had this feel from Attorney Dregney in the past, but it's always good just to do a little reminder, just so everybody knows what the rules are going forward. So first, I want to talk about open meetings. So basically, all meetings, well, Wisconsin has a sunshine law, so any meeting of a government body has to be open to the public. So government body is really any agency, board, mission, committee, or this council. But whenever you get a meeting of that body together, you have to have public notice of that meeting and specifically mention what you're going to be discussing or acting upon at that meeting. So what I want to just sort of highlight on that is, a governmental body can also be created by... be created by sort of inadvertently at times, so whether it's an action of the council, or a rule or procedure that you have in place that creates another body, or any type of gathering of people that exercise some sort of authority by the city, that could be considered a meeting, so it's just something to be aware of. So getting to the nuts and bolts of a meeting, basically, if you've got a quorum, so a majority of the members of a governmental body, there's a meeting presumed, so even if you're meeting at a bar, and you've got a majority of the members there, it could be considered a meeting, but there isn't exception. So there's basically a two-part test, so first, you've got a, there's discussion, or topics include items that relate to the business of the city. So if you're talking about a zoning ordinance or potential permit that's going to be before the city, that relates to city business, so that's passing the first part of the test. Second part is you've got a number of members gathering or participating where they can affect the decision. In many cases, this is just going to be a majority of the members, so here we've got a 12-member body, so if you have a majority, which would be seven, you are having a meeting at that point. But you could technically also have a meeting if it's a number that affects the decision, so you could have a two-thirds vote, so for budget amendments that requires a two-thirds vote, for example. So if you've got members meeting that are less than the seven, but enough to overrule the two-thirds requirement, that's technically a meeting under the open meetings law. So in that case, you would need to have a notice of that meeting to the public, and specifically provide notice of what the discussion was. So a couple of other things to keep in mind, walking quorums, that's essentially where you have one person that is, you know, you're not all meeting in one place, but you've got one person that is sort of, you know, you call one council member, then call another council member, then you call another council member, basically, until you've talked to a majority of the members just to sort of view what their viewpoint is, and try to gain a consensus on something. That is technically a meeting under the open meetings law, even though you've had those individual communications. So again, you can talk to other council members, you can lobby on certain things, but you can't do a majority of the members are enough to affect the decision. So watering hole meeting is, again, sort of similar to, you know, the definition of a meeting, if you've got enough people there to constitute a quorum or affect the decision, even if it's a social area, it could still technically be a meeting. Moving on to written correspondence, a couple of things I want to hit on here, just with email. If you're emailing other council members, usually what we would do is, I guess best practice is to BCC council members, that way you can't have a reply all. You can do communications that are simply informative in nature, but as soon as you start to have reply all or communications back and forth, that constitutes a meeting because you're getting sort of consensus building, or you're figuring out where their people's positions are on certain matters. So it's important to not hit the reply all button, and in communications that I might send out, I'll typically just BCC all the members, that way you're getting the information, because you can convey the information, but you just can't respond to it in email. Social gatherings, so if there's a social or chance gathering, that does not constitute a meeting under the open meetings law, so this weekend, if you happen to run into a majority of members at a festival, that's a social or chance gathering, that doesn't need to be preceded by a public notice. So that's allowed, just don't talk about city business if you see each other this Closed session, I'll just hit on that real quick. So obviously, in the past year, we've had quite a few closed sessions. You are allowed to, while most meetings have to be in open session, the council can decide to go into closed sessions for certain topics. Oftentimes, they involve negotiation, where we're trying to set a bargaining position for the city, and we've all gotten very familiar with that one over the past year. Couple of others would be for like performance evaluations of employees, or talking about disciplinary information, or let's say that there's some threat of a lawsuit, or the city's involved in litigation, we can go into closed session so that I can provide you legal advice or guidance about how to proceed in litigation. So there's just some common exceptions to the open meetings law, but that's just sort of a brief overview. We can go into ethics. So the city has adopted its own ethics code, which sort of follows the state ethics code, but as elected officials, you are all subject to the state ethics code and the local code regarding your use of office for private gain or financial incentives that people might want to give you in office. So the big ones are, you cannot use your office to obtain anything of substantial value for yourself, a family member, or an organization of which you are associated with, which basically means you own 10% of the company, or you're a director of some type. Immediate family member would be somebody that you're related to by blood or marriage, and who receives 50% of their support from you. So a spouse qualifies for that, your kids could qualify for that if they're like living with you, but otherwise, like your aunt and your uncle, if they're not receiving 50% of their support from you, they technically don't qualify as immediate family members. So you could technically vote on something that relates to them, it just may not be perceived that well outside of the organization. But typically, if you're voting on, if the discussion topic is on like a permit that's personal to you, best practice is to avoid voting on it, abstain, don't be involved with the discussion at all. Anything that is of general nature, so like setting the tax levy, that technically affects you as residents, but because it affects a broad class of people, it's not an ethics violation for you to vote on things like that. Special assessments, or if you're, you know, we're doing like something that affects an entire neighborhood that you're a part of, it's not technically an ethics violation, but you could still choose not to participate if you felt like it was not appropriate. The other ethics consideration is you can't receive anything of value to take certain action. So if, let's say, a developer is asking for an approval of some sort, you can't accept any cash contributions for them. Seems like it's pretty simple, but obviously, it's a law for a reason. So that one's pretty straightforward, and if you're abstaining from any official action, like I said, just don't be involved, best practice is even to just leave the room entirely while the discussion takes place, just so there's not any appearance of you being involved whatsoever in the decision-making process. So all of those are misdemeanor offenses, where it's just a forfeiture amount if you're found in violation of them. There are some felony violations, so you cannot, as a public official, even be involved in the negotiating of a contract that you have an interest in. So if you own a business and you try to enter into a contract to provide a service to the city, or do something for the city, and it's in excess of $15,000, even if you abstain from the discussion at the city council, that's still a legal violation, and it's a Class E felony, which could include prison time. So again, avoid those at all costs, just don't enter into contracts with the city if you're a city council member. If you ever have any questions about a particular action, you can seek an advisory opinion from the city's ethics board. Those are confidential, and if you rely on an opinion, an ethics opinion, you are protected from liability. So if there are any questions on those, you can always ask for an opinion, or contact me as well, I'm always happy to talk through ethics issues with people. I'll just briefly talk about parliamentary procedure. You're all pretty good about following this, so we've got Robert's Rules of Order, sometimes they get a little messy because they're meant for larger bodies, and we're dealing with a small council, so it doesn't always translate exactly, but generally, we try to follow Robert's Rules of Order. So actions by the city council are done by a motion, a second, and then a vote on the, there's discussion and deliberation, and then a vote by usually a majority. So when we're talking or discussing, it's one person at a time, so as you've probably all experienced, you've got the chief presiding officer at the council meeting who calls on another person, right, to discuss, but this happens at the committee level as well. So you should, once you're acknowledged to have the floor, that's when you can discuss motions, the, you've got main motions, so like for ordinances, you do the motion to approve. Second, there are other types of ordinances, which are secondary, are secondary motions, so like motions to amend, so there's sort of an order of operations, which we can sort of deal with as it comes, but that's generally how it works. Public records law, so a record is very broadly defined, and basically, any communication or anything that you do that is written down can be considered a record. There are exceptions, like your own personal notes, so like if you're just taking personal notes during the meeting tonight, those would not qualify as a record. I guess a couple of things I just want to highlight are, I don't need to go into like custodian duties at all, just a couple of things I want to talk about are more personal advice, because you all, when you like send emails, or messages, or text messages, if they relate to city business, they could be considered a public record. So keep official city communications on your city email, that way they're easy to locate, and because you don't want somebody pulling your private phone to try to locate any messages that might relate to city business. So that would be my recommendation, is just keep all official city communications through your email or city devices. The other thing, purely personal records or purely personal communications, those are not considered records. So like, let's say you're using your city email, and you're sending something that's not related to city business at all, technically wouldn't qualify as a record under some case law, but just, I guess, be mindful when you're sending communications, just presume that somebody else will read it that isn't the person you're sending it to. That's just a good rule to follow. Just another follow-up on that, too, with, like if the city does get a record request, oftentimes, it's pretty straightforward and simple to fulfill. Sometimes we get more complicated ones, where people will ask for like all communications from a certain member, from like January 1st of '23 to January 1st of '24. Those kind of get complicated at times, and we have to do sort of an analysis to see if those are all disclosable by, under state law. So again, that's why you want to presume that somebody else will see it, but we'll also take a look at those, so like any communication you make to me as the city attorney, that could be protected under attorney-client privilege if it's in the furtherance of seeking legal advice or an illegal opinion. So that means we wouldn't necessarily have to disclose it, so you can feel free to make those communications to me, because the law wants you to communicate freely with your attorney, right? That way you can get the best advice possible. So there are exceptions to the records law, and we sort of have to address those on a case-by-case basis. But important thing is, don't just CC me and think that attorney-client privilege applies, just make sure it's directed to me, asking something specifically, because you can't just CC me to try to get around the public records law, not that I'm accusing anybody of trying to do that. But I think that's all the highlights I wanted to, there's a lot of information that's provided in your packet, I'm more than happy to answer questions now, or if you want to reach out sometime in the future. Obviously, I want to be a resource to all of you, anytime you need an opinion on anything, feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Attorney Mathie? Exciting stuff, isn't it?
I know. Usually at like conferences where we have ethics, at the end of it, they give you beer, but that's not going to happen tonight.
All right, so no questions, we'll move on to our agenda items. Oh, we have one more communication, I'm sorry, Riverfront Redevelopment update.
I'll give a quick update on this one. So last week, the RDA met regarding the Riverfront redevelopment. So the developer had certain milestones that he had to meet to continue with the project, and if he didn't satisfy those milestones, the RDA or the city council had the option of terminating the agreement. So the developer was supposed to submit an application for a brownfield redevelopment grant, a remediation grant, to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation by May 1st. He did not satisfy that deadline. There were some communications about the project not being feasible. Ultimately, the RDA met, and the developer had a proposal for a potential path forward, but ultimately, the RDA decided that because the developer did not satisfy this milestone, that it wanted to terminate the agreement. So because it was a three-party agreement with the developer, the RDA, and the city, any one of those entities could have decided to terminate the development agreement and the real estate purchase and sale agreement at that time. And the RDA, after a long discussion, decided that it did not feel, well, I don't want to speak for the RDA, but essentially, it was not a viable project. So ultimately, they decided to vote to terminate the real estate agreement, and that notice was sent off to the developer, so that is no longer in force. So the RDA will be meeting in June to discuss potential new options for the Riverfront project, and we're doing some work in the meantime, just to provide them options and potential paths forward. But as of right now, that project is starting back at square one. I don't know if any RDA members want to add any additional comments or comments.
Okay, here are none, we'll continue with the agenda. And the next item is the consent agenda, and there is numerous items on the consent agenda. And at this point, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Move to approve? Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schumacher, would anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. And the next item is ordinance number seven of 2024, and this is a second reading from Public Safety, older person Jensen.
Amending section 6-2 of the City of Stoughton Code of Ordinances as follows, keeping of animals, birds, well, I'm not going to read the whole thing. This is the first reading. Let's see, it is, the purpose of this is to...
Second reading.
Well, it is the second reading, I'm sorry, it is. Let me go back here. It's ordinance seven of 2024, ordinance amending section, or amending 6-2, Public Safety recommended on a 3-0 vote, 32724, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by older person Peyton, older person Jensen.
Yes. This is, we have anybody else to, I don't see the, okay, the girls are not here. President Reeves was looking into some issues on this with the, what was it, was it, I'm lost on that one.
So I had some questions, and I sensed as we talked through it that maybe others did too, and I just wanted, I didn't feel like, at least I was not comfortable making the decision until I had some information from someone who knew a lot more about pigs than I do. So I reached out to a couple people. One is, I believe, online, Alicia Torres, who is the, I hope I pronounced that right, and thank you for being here, Alicia, and being patient. She's a shelter director for Heartland Farm Sanctuary. She's a shelter director for Heartland Farm Sanctuary here in Stoughton, and she has, she can tell you more about her organization, but I do know she has, I have visited there, and I know they work with pigs pretty regularly. We also did, Candy Christian, our clerk, helped me get into contact with a vet who does primarily horse and equine services now, but has past experiences with, you know, pigs and mini pigs and other pigs. So I'd sent her a list of questions, and I sent the same questions to Alicia, just hoping that we could get some clarity about what it might entail. And the gist of it was, you know, I was looking to see, do they make good neighbors in an urban environment? Are there things we should be concerned about as far as noise or behaviors, health-wise? So the questions that I sent to the veterinarian, who is Dr. Batker at the Country Equine Veterinary Service, her answers are attached, but Alicia, I don't know if you're comfortable addressing that list of questions, or if you have some comments or thoughts. I have not spoken with Alicia, so I have no idea what her thoughts are, but I was hoping she could just share some of her experiences so we can make an informed decision. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thanks so much for letting me talk about it. Yeah, I did get the question, I can kind of run through those, and, you know, my own personal recommendation is not to allow them, but my thinking for that is because we do have currently nine pot-bellied pigs that were all previously pets that were surrendered to us because they don't make good urban pets. Some of the reasons why are that they do require a lot more space than what people think. The minimum requirement, going by sanctuary standards, is a quarter acre per pig, and we actually recommend a half acre, with the reason being that pigs don't actually do very well on their own. They need companionship. So ideally, they would have two pigs, not one pig. The inside minimum space requirement is 65 square feet, with no hardwood slippery floors. Ventilation is a concern with pigs, they're prone to respiratory diseases. Some of the requirements that are quite different from what a dog or a cat would be is that they do require specific grain, fresh produce daily, they need to either be grazing or eating hay. They require regular vet care, just like cats and dogs, at least a couple of times a year. Hoof and tusk trimming, which can be very traumatic, we actually just had it done with our pigs today. That's a lot of yelling and screaming during that. The reason being is that they're prey animals. When they're restrained, they're very upset. Also, because they are prey animals, they're not good with dogs, usually. It just does depend on, a lot of times, there will be issues for that reason, predator and prey. Pigs are highly intelligent, they need enrichment, they need exercise, companionship. Going back to the spaces that they need, they need fencing to keep them in their area, straw bedding. Pigs don't sweat, so they need to have a way to keep cool, which for us is mud pits and little pools. I would say that the numbers that we look at are about at least two calls every month for people trying to surrender their pet pigs because of the challenges of having them in their homes. All sanctuaries are full right now. We, with nine, we couldn't possibly squeeze in another one. As far as being neighbors, you know, they don't make a lot of squealing noises unless they're being restrained, then it's not squealing, it's downright yelling. But otherwise, you know, you would hear some grunting and different things like that. Might they dig under a fence and into a neighbor's yard? Yes, they're very motivated to explore, so if their space is too small, that could be an issue. Has to be very professionally well-done fencing. The behavior issues that might come up, especially if they're not given exercise or proper care, could be destructive to property. Many of the pigs that we have had are surrendered because they've torn up carpeting in the house, they've broken down doors. Any of those frustration reactions to having too small space and not the proper care could be aggression in the form of biting or charging. They do need specific vaccines. Also, they need, minimum three, so what they need is, what we recommend and what we do for our pigs is rabies. One called flu-shir, which is for, actually for swine flu, which can be transmitted to people if they get it. And respi-shir, which is for respiratory diseases. Also, pigs need to have fecal test done, just like dogs and cats, and they may need dewormers. As far as what parasites and diseases that they can carry, they can get mites, skin infections, worms, just like their dogs that are going outside. If, or was changed, I think it would be very important for them to be licensed and vaccinated at minimum. Also, we would, we're very, very happy to be a resource for people who are considering mini pig ownership. Because of these, you know, various needs that they have, we're more than happy to talk to people about what it would take to be a successful pig parent. But I think as far as the ordinance goes, I don't know how many properties in urban Stoughton would be able to support, you know, the amount of space that they need. Is there any questions that I can answer specifically?
Just for clarification, well, or maybe you could comment, but I remember when I went on a tour when you first opened and you talked about the pigs that had ended up there. Do I recall that one of the issues, I mean, 200 pounds, I have to tell you, does not sound mini to me?
It's not.
And if I recall, I think one of the things you said is that, for various reasons, whether it's a breeder who's not honest or is just not very experienced, a pig that may be supposed to be 100 can often get much bigger, and there's probably not a good way to predict that size when someone gets a pig. Am I remembering that correctly, that people just sort of end up with this very enormous animal that they had not anticipated?
Yeah, a lot of times, breeders will say that they're going to be miniature or teacup, and that's really not the case. Our smallest pig is 130 pounds. Our largest pig is a, these are our mini pigs, and we also have large farm pigs, but our largest mini pig is 195 pounds, so that is not mini. And I think that a lot of city ordinances, they assume that pigs will stay under 100 pounds, and that is not a reasonable expectation at all. A lot of the pigs that are pets are actually a mixture of different, you know, breeds of pot bellies, so people don't really know what they're getting. Breeders are often showing the parents of these little pigs that the parents aren't even full grown. Pigs can grow in size up till the age of four or five. So if you're seeing very young pigs, they're not going to, they're not at the weight that they're probably going to be. And just to mention as well, like how long mini pigs are going to be around as your pet, they range, you know, they can live to be eight to 15 years old. The oldest pot belly that I knew was 20 years old, so it's a huge commitment. And people don't realize they're going to get that big. They love their pigs, but then they see how they're destroying the house, and they can't keep them enriched in the right way, and then that's when they turn to us. It's usually a couple of years into pig ownership that people start to be really frustrated.
And just one follow-up question. If I remember right, also, when I, maybe it was in the website, you'd mentioned that there are limited resources for farm animals. I know there's a lot of dog and cat rescues, but if people, you know, find out they're sort of, have an animal that they can no longer keep, they're not, they don't have a lot of places, right? I mean, you're full, are there other options for them?
There really aren't. You know, and all the sanctuaries that I'm aware of are full right now, you know, at capacity with mini pigs, because it is such an, like an epidemic, you know? There's just not places for them to go. And then when they end up in a shelter, because they have nowhere else to go, they don't, they don't thrive and they don't survive, because they cannot be in that type of environment. So sadly, yeah, there's not a lot of resources if people are unable to keep their pigs. And actually, a couple of our pigs were found homeless because people dumped them. They became so desperate to get rid of their pig that they thought they'd be better off in the wild, I guess. But that's obviously not the case. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Alderperson Hirsch.
Sure. Thank you, Alicia. Can you go over the size requirements again?
As far as what they might range in size?
No, no, the, I guess the enclosure size that they would need to...
Sure. So what we recommend is a quarter acre pig, and that is for their roaming, which is enriching to them, and also for grazing purposes. And again, I would never recommend that there is a single pig. They should have a companion. So if you're talking about two pigs, if that's even allowed by an ordinance, that's a half acre, fenced acre.
Second question is, you talked about in the warmer weather that they need mud pits in places to wallow. What about in the wintertime, because they don't really have fur? So besides being indoors, but yet they probably still have to go outdoors, how do they keep warm, or do they have enough body fat that that's not a problem?
A lot of places will have a couple of pigs, and they just sleep very closely together at night, and that's how they keep warm, if they're in a barn or something like that. In a house, yes, they would be very comfortable for them if it was heated, but they would, again, need lots of bedding. They love blankets, they love straw, they love to like burrow down and things. And then they'll just also destroy your bedding, if that's all that you have, if you're talking about having them in a house. They're not going to want to go outside very much in the winter, they don't like to get their little bellies wet with the snow. They, and as you mentioned, they have no hair, so they're not going to want to be outside for any extended period of time. And that's why it is important to have, you know, a large enough space inside, enriching activities. I know that some pet parents of pigs will litter train their pigs, and I know that's possible, because pigs don't like to go to the bathroom at all where their beds are. So I can see how they would, you know, be able to be litter trained. But as far as for our pigs, they just hold it until they get outside, so they're going to want to go outside every day, just like you have to take your dogs out.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Alderperson Shurlocke.
Alicia, could you speak to the benefits of, or have you seen pigs as therapy animals versus just general pets? Like, I could see benefits for that if that is such a thing.
I suppose it could be a thing, you know? People do form strong relationships with the pigs that they know here. One thing I will say is that pigs are very willful, they're very intelligent. If they don't want to do something, they're not going to do it. So I think that, if I was thinking of a therapy animal, I would think that there's other animals that are more, you know, amenable to that, and then easier to predict their behavior. But unless a pig is getting all of these things, which is a lot of exercise, a lot of mental stimulation, all of those things, they're not going to be able to, you know, give back in the way that people are looking for. All of their needs are going to have to be met, and then if that's the case, if all those needs are being met, then they're, they could be a wonderful companion, for sure.
Any other questions?
Hi, this is April in Brooklyn. Are we able to make a comment?
I have to ask the city council if they're willing to waive the rules. So April and Brooklyn were the two that proposed that we do the ordinance, so they've been to the committee meetings. So I would ask the council if you would be okay for them to speak, even though they weren't invited to speak. Alderperson Lakkaki.
I move that we waive the rules to allow April and Brooklyn to speak, given that they had first initiated this process and offer another side of this.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Alderperson Jensen. And I don't know if we can have any discussion on waiving the rules. I don't think we can, and I think it needs a two-thirds vote. I can pull out my cheat sheet.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I know Greg has a cheat sheet. Yeah, it's, I don't even know if it's on here. We're just going to check that quick, but I think that's the...
I believe it is.
Going to have to get a better cheat sheet.
I'd like to make a point of privilege and request new cheat sheets. If I may. I don't think you have, see, for example, I don't think you have to second a point of privilege, but I appreciate...
We need the cheat sheet.
Yeah, two-thirds, it's a, a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules.
All right, and I think it's no discussion. Does it say that?
I believe, I can't find it, but I believe that is correct.
Okay. So we're going to vote to waive the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Well, that was easy enough. So we're waiving the rules, so we will allow April and Brooklyn to speak. Who would like to go first? Thank you for being here.
So I'm April, that's Brooklyn, and like Mary said, we are the ones that initiated this ordinance change, and I just want to start off saying I really appreciate Alicia's perspective. I think there's very few people who get a chance to, you know, understand and love pigs and also champion for them, so I think that's great. Just providing a different perspective as someone, or we own a pet pig, he's nine years old, and just giving our perspective, he's a house pig. And a couple of things I wanted to state is that, I know that was brought up, and I love Heartland Farm Sanctuary, I think they're great, we've been there before. There's, you said nine pigs, and I think it's very relative. You know, when you go to the Humane Society, let's say the Dean County Meat Study, there are thousands of animals surrendered for a variety of reasons, and the, there's not very few farm sanctuaries. So, you know, I don't know if that's something that needs to come into question, is, I'm sure, like, what happens if someone needs to surrender their animal, but I don't think there's necessarily like a pandemic with that. Also, you know, right now, I think the proposed ordinance change is to allow a single pig, and I do understand there's some, there are plenty of pet owners who would prefer to have two. Oscar, some pigs, you know, prefer to be by themselves, Oscar's been by himself, he wouldn't take to another pig at all. And I believe that having a, allowing a pig, like, in your house and in your backyard is more than enough space for them. And I think another big thing is just pet ownership, so making sure that before you get a pig, you do the research, just like any other animal. So vaccine, you know, making sure they're up, they do their vet every year for, you know, tusk trims, hoof trims.
Training.
Training. And then, you know, you said ventilation, and, you know, pigs don't really sweat. Just keeping those considerations also, it's just part of being a good pet owner. Anything else you would say? Oh, I think a great example is just looking at what Mastin did. They did have a pig that a neighbor said that they're not allowed to have, and then the neighborhood kind of rallied again for it, and it sounds like the pig really didn't do anything, cause any harm, and then with everybody supporting it, they ended up approving it. And I think we've learned from other ordinances that it doesn't really attract people to get more pigs. I think it just allows the town to kind of know of where the pigs are, and seeing it's like, just kind of managing that. Yeah, so like right now, like Middleton, Monona, there's several neighboring cities and towns that allow pigs, and, you know, there's very, very, very few. There's probably like a handful of pigs in these neighboring districts. Never had any issues. Yeah, so I think, you know, what we're saying is just kind of comes down to pet ownership, same as it would with cats and dogs. And I know, you know, you might be thinking of the rehoming, there's not a lot of...
Resources?
Resources, but I think with our experience, we really could... Resources, but I think with our experience, we really connected with the pig community. And, I mean, there's, just like, like dogs and cats, there is Facebook pages that are rehoming Wisconsin pigs. And, I mean, everybody shares it. And I think I've seen everybody kind of, kind of discuss it through Facebook and kind of get the big that way.
Like the American Mini Pig Association.
So I think it's just also just having education as well as kind of seeing what your resources are. And then the last thing I want to mention, I know before last month, meaning I did send out an email to the city council members with an informational packet. So if there's any other questions, I know, like you mentioned, like zoonotic diseases and things like that, that is covered in that packet. Anything else you want to say? All right, thank you for letting us speak.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here. All right, any other questions or comments from council members? So we do have a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay, so it looks like the motion does fail. All right, and so it was one to 11, is that what you have, Candy? One to 10? I think we have 12 here. Yeah, we're all here.
Is Christine in there? Okay.
Okay, did you catch your candy?
Yes, I have it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, and that is Resolution 77 of 2024. And then we have a need for public hearing on the next two. Let me get these queued up here. And these came from the Planning Commission. So Alder Person Caravelo, do you want to introduce the resolution?
Sure, thank you. This is R. 77 of 2024, approving a conditional use permit for a proposed two-flat located at 808 West Main Street, Stilton, Wisconsin. Partial number is 0511-082-3132-4, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Butler. All right, anything we want to cover before we go into the public hearing?
I think it was all in the introduction.
Okay, so we'll close the meeting, open for public hearing. Anybody wish to speak at the public hearing? Hearing none, close the public hearing, reopen for our regular business. Any questions or comments on this one? President Reeves?
I have a question for our planning, is Chris on our planning director?
Yes, Chris is here.
So I don't have any concerns or objection to the, being a two-flat, but I did wonder if I overlooked, is there any, will this be subject to the minimum maintenance standards? For instance, the wood and the paint, I know there's some decaying wood, and it needs paint, so I didn't see that as part of the recommendation, but maybe that's just an assumption that we'd have to follow those. So if you can just clarify the exterior plans, that would be great.
Yeah, I would say, well, there is going to be a small walkway that's going to be added between, I mean, you can see it in the, when you're looking down, but if you could scroll down to some of the actual plans on it, you can actually see it from the side view. They're going to have to go in and construct some of these new egresses and exits, and that's going to require them to go in and do these updates and, you know, make it look like a whole building in this area. So, yes. And if you want, I can follow up with that as well, so.
The reason I asked is I do know that those were discussions I used to have with our previous planning director. And once the boat left the dock, so to speak, it was difficult to, sometimes compliance was difficult, you know, sending out notices and that sort of thing. So I just thought this would be the great opportunity for all to get the painting and the wood and all that stuff. So that's great.
Yeah, I can, I can follow up with Steve and ask to make sure that all maintenance is done prior to occupancy. I don't know, you know, I know that anyone that's been with our plan board knows I... Um, I don't even think we need to. I think we can just say, no, this needs to be done. I know, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I don't have our ordinance currently memorized. Previous ordinances normally, if there's more than 30% of the paint peeling, and it's a pretty generic requirement, so I wouldn't be surprised if we have something in our ordinance. Generally, we can go in and require maintenance on buildings, so. And for the record, right now, I know everybody on our plan board has heard me say this at every meeting, but I am working on starting the process of updating our ordinances. So this is something that we should address as well.
All right, and Attorney Mathias is mic on.
Yeah, I would say if you want to, I guess, you could impose that as a condition, something along the lines of the applicant must comply with city design standards or maintenance standards.
Prior to occupancy?
Correct.
The worst-case scenario is redundant.
Yeah. I do think that we, Alder Myski, I think during public, was it during public work that we actually talked about minimum maintenance standards and changed an ordinance? So I do think there is an ordinance that addresses minimum maintenance standards specifically. So that might be a spot that we could find that, so, thank you.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, do you want to amend the motion to put the condition on it? Or do you just want to go with the motion as it is?
Can I ask that we just go ahead and amend the motion so it's in record? I'm not worried about it, I think we can fall back, but it's always nice having that secondary thing on there. And if it is a, I am fairly certain that they're going to follow through with it, but if it is a concern, it'll give me the extra backing.
Did you want to make an amendment?
Can I do that?
Yeah, you can do that. Yeah, you can do that.
Yes, I would, sorry, I would like to amend the motion to require that they meet the minimum maintenance standards for the exterior work, the paint, the decaying wood, and whatever else is in the windows, I think is addressed in minimum maintenance standards. So prior to occupancy.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Schumacher. Did you catch the language there, Candy?
Yes, I haven't, thank you.
Okay, and then I saw some other people flinch. Are there questions or comments? Alder Person Hirsch.
I have a question, did this, because it says in the resolution that it falls within the historic design overlay zone for landmarks? Has it gone through landmarks for their approval?
I, I wasn't unsure if it did or not. I think I was told it did not. I'm currently working on some of that with Rick, our attorney, so...
So if it doesn't, then it needs to be stricken from the resolution?
I think it says it may fall in the, I think that's how I wrote it.
No, it says this property also falls under the residential historic design overlay, which means additional approvals, okay, it does say may be needed, but...
Yeah, that's, I purposely put it in as may be needed because it's currently not very clear on some of this stuff. So I want to make sure that, part of the reason, when I put stuff like this in for recommendations on anything, I want the owners to be aware that there could be additional approvals. I'm sorry, I know I should have a very clear answer on this, but I, at this point, don't, so...
I guess, I mean, if I was looking at this resolution and it's not resolved, and it was passed tonight, and then the owner thinks that he's gotten the approval, and then it might come back to him through landmarks, I guess, is there a way that we can, you know, not have any surprises for this landowner?
Well, may I speak?
Sure, Alder Person Lagaki.
I sit on landmarks now, but have really been on the landmarks website, and I'm confirming of the 33 property, 32 properties that are listed as local historic landmarks. 808 West Main Street is not listed. 808 West Main Street is not listed.
It's not a local landmark, it could be in a district, but it's not a local landmark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we remove this from the resolution, then?
Let's remove it from the resolution. I would feel more comfortable with it removed from the resolution.
Okay, I'll make the motion to remove item number two.
I think we have to vote on the amendment first, and then we'll make another amendment. Okay? Any questions on the amendment that's on the floor? And the amendment that was on the floor was the minimum maintenance part of it. Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries, now you can make that amendment.
All right, now I'd like to make amendment to delete or stricken item number two after be it resolved regarding the landmarks commission approval. And I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. So we're removing number two, Candy, did you catch that?
Yes, I have it, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I just wanted to mention something else that's not, just some comments that some folks brought up at planning regarding this. I just wanted to mention them, so whenever that's, if this is an appropriate time to do that.
Is it related to this amendment? Otherwise, once we vote, we'll go back to the main motion.
It's just related to the...
So it can wait?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on this amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. So it takes us to the original motion with the two amendments. Alder Person Caravelo.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure that, because there were a couple few comments at Plan Commission, seemed like the biggest one that was a viable concern was the parking regarding this house, this structure being close to the intersection of Main Street. And there was just a neighbor that had some concerns about where parking would be allowed, and that previously, I guess, before some resurfacing of the street or some re-curb and gutter, I think there were marked areas that had a defined area recessed back from the intersection, and those after the construction on that street, those went away. So I just wanted to make sure that we were making, making sure that we were aware of that person's comments, that their concerns have not disappeared.
Okay, we'll follow up with Public Works on that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Lagaki.
I have a comment, two comments, actually. One is that a lover of old houses that I am, and driving to work to Madison every day, I believe this is the house that I saw geothermal heating and cooling put in. I don't know if anyone else has that memory or observation. So that's quite an investment into an old house to do that, particularly, they went down very, very far, because they don't have the land to go wide. That's quite an investment in sustainability. And it's not usual for old houses to have that kind of thing. But I think it becomes very environmentally friendly and much more affordable over time. And I just wanted to note that as an observer, and another observer is I was noticing my biases as I read this. I thought, oh, man, an old house going to a two-flat. And we have an old house, and right before the depression or around the time of the depression, they really turned these old family homes into two-flats. Because at that time, people couldn't afford, and I think about the cost of housing right now. I had to check my bias, that, oh, man, a house being turned into a two-flat, it may be necessary with these kind of investments and the way prices are right now, and this house is looking better and better. It's taken a way long time, but I know what it's like to live in a house and work on it for 17 years. So I, I like to see the improvements coming, and I don't have any worries about this becoming a two-flat at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess just a question for you, Mayor. Do you want me to give a quick spiel on Act 67? Or, I think everybody's heard it, most people have heard it quite a bit by now, but...
You can make it quick.
Yeah. Yeah, just with conditional uses, I just want you all to be aware before the vote that there was a state law change in 2017 that curtailed the city's discretion regarding conditional use permits. So because it's listed as a conditional use, there's sort of this presumption that the use is consistent with the zoning districts it's located in. Really, the focus is on what conditions can you put on the permit to make it acceptable in this location? If you were to want to deny this, that decision would need to be supported by substantial evidence. So that would need to be put into the record, what the evidence is that you're relying on for the denial. Technically, you need substantial evidence to approve it, but we've got the application, the applicant saying that they'll satisfy standards. So there's sort of this presumption that it would be approved unless you've got substantial evidence to support a denial. That's the highlights.
That was quick, and I know as Chris is working on updating the ordinance, there's some that we would like them to be permitted use so we don't have to go through this every time. There's some that, like the next one we'll talk about, that we'd like to be able to just approve administratively because we think it's consistent with what we have in the district. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as amended twice, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, and the next one is also coming from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, where is it? Here it is. This is R. 78 of 2024, approving a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial entertainment restaurant use at 305 South Forest Street, Stilton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Reeves. I think we talked about this at the last meeting. Anything you want to talk about, Alder Caravelo, before we go into public hearing?
I have nothing to add.
All right, we'll close the regular hearing, open for the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? Hearing none, close the public hearing, reopen for our business. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is ordinance number eight. Where'd it go? This one came from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen. And it's the first reading.
Ordinance eight of 2024, amend section 70-180, no parking, 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. It's on Glacier Marine Drive. Basically, what we're looking to do here, I believe that Emmy Roth was looking for some more parking for a second shift. And so we're allowing them to park along the, as you can see in your packet, there's a highlighted area in purple, so they would be able to park on Glacier Marine along that period, along that perimeter.
Yep, and I'll just add that currently, we've allowed them to park on the north side. And then Chris and I went out there because they had a request to extend the period to allow them to park on there. Originally, they were going to build a new parking lot this year, but they've decided to move forward on installing the solar panels instead, which we hope they'll start in July. I was out there yesterday. And we also had a second request from the businesses that are down in the incubator buildings down here on the end. And after going out, there was Chris, she kind of looked over the lay of the land and noticed that on the south side of the road, there's a sidewalk there, there's a crosswalk that leads right into their, crosswalk into their driveway. And on the north side, they were parking, there's a fire hydrant there, there's fresh... And on the north side, they were parking, there's a fire hydrant there, there's freshly landscaped area there with no sidewalks. So it was her recommendation, and a good one, to have them swap sides while they're doing this parking. And we decided to go ahead and change the ordinance that way, we could enforce it. And what we're trying to prevent is from, we're trying to allow them to park during their shifts, which end at midnight, but we don't want people parking overnight or storing semis or trailers and those sorts of things on the road. That's why we put the three to five restriction there. And then in the wintertime, having that restriction in there will also make it easier to plow. And then hopefully by sometime next year, they'll, they'll be doing some additional work, which would include additional parking for their employees. In the meantime, they've done a few things, like they adjusted some of their shift workers to minimize the overlap. Because what was happening is one group was letting out right about the same time as the next group was coming in. So they've done a little bit of modification to try to minimize how many cars are parked on the road. Any questions or comments on this one? Otherwise, go ahead.
Just one, it's not material, but the date should get cleaned up on there.
Pardon me?
The date that it was approved by Public Safety. It should be four twenty-four, not four two forty-seven.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll change that, and then this one will be back at the next meeting. We'll go on to the next item, ordinance number nine of twenty twenty-four. And this one's coming from Public Safety as a first reading as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance nine twenty twenty-four to create section seventy dash two zero four municipal lot parking lease. And I believe, Mayor Swat, do you have a presentation on this?
Yes, so I'll go through this one. And you've heard a lot of public comment, and you received some letters for and against the proposal. So what we're looking at right now is, we're looking at an option for the council to consider entering into a lease. So right now, really what we're considering is an ordinance that would actually allow us to have that discussion. So the details of the lease would be worked out at a later time if this ordinance were to pass. And more than likely, that lease would go through the Finance Committee and then come back to the council if we get to that point. So basically, what I did is I pulled some slides that were in the Plan Commission packet from last night. So I just want to start out by reminding the council that we've already done some approvals on this building, including a general development plan and a specific implementation plan was approved by the Plan Commission last night. So the actual project on the building, that part's already been approved as far as what's going to be in the building, how it's going to lay out, how it's going to look. And then we also had previously approved creating the TIF district. And you might recall that the TIF district was set up not only to benefit this project, but thirty percent of the increment that would be collected from the property tax increase for the value of the buildings would go into the TIF pool and could be used by all the businesses downtown. So we feel that this project will not only be beneficial for the developers and the residents that live there, it'll also be beneficial for the other business owners that want to do some rehab work on their buildings, as well as providing residents for the downtown that can walk for the goods or services, or even their work. So we think for those reasons that it's good for all the downtown businesses, and that's kind of included in the PowerPoint under the project benefits. They're also looking at doing some sustainability upgrades, making affordable housing, increasing the tax base that's down there. I mentioned the TIF a little bit. They're going to be dedicating eighty-five thousand dollars in park fees and then providing projected a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of annual revenue to the other downtown businesses. So we think that this project not only benefits the developers, but it benefits the downtown in general to continue to make it as vibrant as it is today, and hopefully we can continue to build on that. So those are some of the highlights of the benefits of the project. You can see this is kind of the breakdown of what the units are going to be, look like, the sizes, the number of units, and the approximate rent. And then you can see that it falls into categories for the, the medium income. And you can see that, you know, for downtown, for somebody to be able to live downtown in a new unit, it really doesn't happen every day. So we think from that standpoint, it's also a good thing for people that want to live there. So at last call, I think they were talking eighteen units, there might be maybe minus one. I kind of heard today it might be seventeen now. And they're also looking to get historical tax credits as part of the funding mechanism, so they can restore the building to honor the tradition of the building in the downtown. Economic benefits, I talked about a little bit, the park fees, the average revenue for the downtown. And this is kind of the breakdown of what that might look like based on industry standards. So that's included in the packet. There's been some talk about the dumpster. Currently, the dumpster is in poor shape. It's underneath a set of power lines, and the dumpster company and the utilities would like to move the dumpster area. So on this map here, you can kind of see in this little area here, between the building and the island is where they would move the dumpster. And then by doing that, they can actually add four parking stalls there. And then where the current dumpster is under the power lines, I believe we can add ADA spot down there and then have it striped underneath the power lines, so there would still be access for stolen utilities if they have to get at the power lines, or if somebody pulled in here and they needed the backup and turn around, they'd be able to pull into the area where it was striped there against the building and get in and out of there rather easily. The dumpster company is on board. They've expressed concerns for years where the current dumpster is, so they'd love to move it. The parking lot lease, what we did is we did some car counts. The developers had done some last year. I did some additional car counts this year, and they're in the packet, and I'll share them with you. But you can see based on their data, there was quite a few stalls available at various times of the day when they did it last year. I think they did it in May and June at different times of the day. One night, there was an event at the Chorus House. And then what I did is I went down there a few Fridays ago at seven thirty in the morning. This is what the parking lot looks like. You can see there's normally, I think, eighty-two stalls in it, if I remember right. And you can see, you know, most of them are available. Here's another angle at noon. This is how many cars were there. So, you know, for the downtown businesses, I think it's safe to say on a Friday at noon, which is kind of one of the peak hours, there's plenty of parking in the parking lot. And that doesn't even include street parking that is available as well. Here's another angle of it, so you can kind of see the open spaces. Here's some of the street parking that was available. So you can see on Water Street here, there were several parking spots available on both sides. And this is, what is this, Division Street, I think? And there's only a couple cars parked on that road on a Friday. This is Main Street. There's really only one, two, three cars, four cars parked on, actually three cars. This truck here is moving on both sides of the road, so there's plenty of parking there. And then I went down there a few times on a Saturday night. So this was on, the first night was on March twenty-third at eight o'clock. There was a wedding at the Chorus House, there was a sold-out show at the Opera House. There was some live music downtown. And at that night, there was only actually two spots in that parking lot. But there were six spaces on Water Street. There were available spaces on all the other roads. And then on the south side, there was quite a few other spaces. And then I got more detailed when I went down there on April twentieth. This was the night, I believe Marty Stewart was in town, so they had actually two sold-out shows that day. And then there was a wedding at the Chorus House. But you can see that on the north side, within two blocks of that parking lot, on a Saturday night, there were fifty-one spots available. And on the south side, there was sixteen, thirty-four, over fifty on the south side as well. Now, take in mind, on the south side, the Water Street Tavern is closed right now. So normally, there would be some of those parking stalls would be used for their business when they reopen. But still, there was only over fifty spots available. And then I also went down here on the twenty-seventh. There was no show at the Opera House that night. So you can see there were more available spaces in the parking lot. And there was still about fifty available total within two blocks of there. And then on the other side, there was more than that available. And then I included some pictures in there for your entertainment to really show what's going on on a Saturday night in Stoughton. So I really, just really wanted to take a minute to kind of put that issue to bed. I know there's been some communication that there's really not enough parking. The other thing I'll add during the daytime that there's actually more parking now than there was even a couple years ago because when we moved City Hall from the Opera House to the bank, that became a municipal parking lot. So that added quite a few more spaces right across the street from many of the businesses. We put in flashing lights to try to accommodate more pedestrian-friendly areas so people can get to and from the businesses. And there's more pictures in here. The other thing I wanted to add is, on Water Street, you might recall, not too long ago, we lifted the no parking from three to five in the morning. I know that came up tonight as one of the barriers. And as far as I know, that's been pretty successful. And one of the things I'd like to do is expand that, but I didn't, I didn't want to go into that all in. I wanted to see how that worked out. We consider that that is a pilot program as well as this parking lot. We're not feeling like we wouldn't revisit and look at expanding that lately, or later, especially the three to five AM. I think that on all these side streets, I think we could easily do that because many of the overnight parking that occurs in the municipal parking lots are people that would park on the side streets if they're available, because those apartments are on the side streets, on Water Street, Division Street, Forest, Fourth Street, some of those other ones. So by freeing up more parking overnight on the roads, I think that creates more opportunity in the municipal parking lots for everybody. So I think that the night parking is in pretty good shape as well. There's a memo in here from Chris, and I'll let her cover that.
Hi, so I just want to reiterate, as some of the people that were with the, at the Plan Board last night, meeting with me. So currently in the downtown district, there are no minimum parking requirements for developments, which is very normal in most downtown districts. A lot of times with downtown areas, they do have leased parking stall, spots, or something along those lines. I know what we did in Whitewater, and then this last week when I was in Janesville, they actually do lease spots or hanging tags or something along the lines to accommodate residential areas in the downtown. I understand a lot of people's hesitation with this. I think the way that we should probably approach this, and this is essentially what I'm talking about in the memo, is look at this as a pilot program, I think writing out how we want to approach it. And like sitting back and seeing like, okay, this is what's working and this is what's not working in these areas. So essentially, that's what it's saying in my memo. I've tried to stay on the periphery of this because I don't want people confusing the development, which we can't require minimum parking for our current ordinance, again, which is very normal in downtowns versus something that's coming out of Public Safety. I guess, do you, you know, and I'll turn this back over to Tim, but that, that was the direction that when I was asked, I was, I think this is the direction to go with it, is look at it as, say, okay, let's see how this works. You know, do we go and leave spots? Are we doing hanging tags? Opening up more parking off of Main Street overnight? You know, this is all stuff to consider.
All right, thank you, Chris. And then I'll just finish it up. Sorry, my voice is really scratchy tonight. So here's a map of what the additional parking might look like that I mentioned earlier with the four stalls. And then you can see down in the corner here, kind of the mess we have with the dumpster that we can create a spot down there. So really, we're, you know, if we do move forward with the ordinance and ultimately a lease, we're talking, we were talking eighteen spots. I think we're talking seventeen or eighteen now. We're picking up five. But really, it's only twelve or thirteen spots we're talking about. And as Chris mentioned, you know, they'll be able to park in this lot whether we enter into a lease arrangement or not. And I personally think it'll be more orderly if we have assigned parking for the people that live down there than having a free-for-all. That's just my personal opinion. I have nothing to base that on. I think eventually, people will find their way to park. And then just some of the other points that, you know, come up when we talk about parking, and you see this all around, that it'll kind of take care of itself, where if we assign the parking, people will eventually fill in the new spots. I consider for the folks that are down there already, this is more of a temporary inconvenience than it is a permanent problem for them. They're just used to parking in a certain location, and they may have to park somewhere else, but it'll still, still more than likely be in the lot. Or for some of them, as we free up the street parking, they'll be able to park in the street as well. And you see this all the time in the bigger cities where you'll have one group coming in in the morning and using the parking spots. They may or may not have to pay for them with meters or ramps, and then they'll have a second shift that'll come in there. So like in Madison, they actually collect money at least twice a day, sometimes more than that, for the different people that are coming and going throughout the day. And then some of the other points we wanted to make is, I think we can do some things on the roads, you know, for the twenty-four hour parking. We have that most of our spots. We can be more consistent with that because really, the twenty-four hour and the forty-eight hour, what we want to do is encourage people to come and go and not store their boats and their second or third vehicles there. And that's what we find oftentimes even in our municipal lots. So we want to, if I can spell, we want to focus on really enforcing that and not spending our time enforcing, you know, two-hour parking or issuing permits and having to enforce our own parking in the parking lots. Because we don't want to discourage people from shopping or visiting our downtown and getting a parking ticket. You heard somebody speak tonight, you know, their customer got a parking ticket. The way I'd like to see it is on the road, they receive their parking ticket, we would eliminate that three to five parking in the morning. That would eliminate their concern about needing the municipal lot because they'd be able to park overnight in the street. So that's, that's what I'm looking at doing. We're open to other ideas. Maybe, maybe we do need to enforce parking, but maybe it's three hour or four hour. So people, if they come downtown and they're shopping and they decide, oh, we might as well eat while we're down here, now they got to make a choice. Do we risk getting a ticket, or do we eat? I would have them prefer to eat, not have to worry about it myself. But, so those are some things that I think we can revisit and maybe, you know, engage some of the business owners into that conversation as we move forward and try to come up with some collective solutions. But I really don't want to slow down this project in order to do that for the reasons I stated at the beginning, that I think this project, economic development-wise, is a great project for our downtown. It's great for our businesses. It encourages more investment in our community. It creates more opportunities for the other business owners, for their buildings. So I just kind of have some other different thoughts that have been gathered that we put down here. And you can just see that there's going to be kind of ebbs and flows in these parking lots and on the street parking anyway. And like I said, I don't really think there's a parking shortage. I think I've demonstrated they're not. It's more about a convenience. And, you know, I, I feel that in my neighborhood because I live on Page Street, so nobody can park on our side of the road because I'm one of the two roads in the city that has a bike lane on my side, and we just adapt. So people come to visit, I try to make room in my parking, in my driveway. I'll park my own vehicle on the road so they don't have to, or they'll just have to park on the other side of the road and walk across the street. I don't think it's really too big of a deal to walk, you know, across the street or even two blocks to get to a parking spot if you're, if you're coming downtown. So those are just my thoughts, and I certainly would like to hear your thoughts and ideas. Alder Person Hirsch and Jensen, and go ahead. Other person, Hirsch and Johnson, and go ahead.
Yes, I have a number of comments and questions. First, nowhere on this ordinance does it say that this is only for this particular development, even though all the supporting documentation is. And so my concern is, is that we're creating an equity kind of situation. We have a lot of downtown businesses that are creating apartments in their upstairs, you know, multifamily. Are we setting a new precedent that anybody that, that has downtown apartments or fixes up a building or Phil wants, you know, his apartment building now can lease parking spaces? Because I think we're setting up an equitable situation. And if this is what we want, then we have to open it up for everybody. Otherwise, I think we're playing favoritism, and that's, I know this is what the developer wants, but there's a lot of people that are developing and fixing up their apartments downtown. And I think if we start to be equitable, if we do it for this developer, we need to do it for all. I don't want to play favoritism. I don't feel comfortable playing favoritism. And as you said, there's plenty of parking. There should be no reason why people in this new development can't find parking spaces. You, you look at the data as saying, oh, there's plenty of spaces for people that come to Stone to find places. I look at the data in another way as well. There's plenty of spaces within two blocks where these new residents can actually park as well. I've lived in the city of Madison and have, we always, I always had to find new parking every, every night. That's kind of the urban life. I just don't like setting a precedent for one particular development because I think it's opening up a huge can of worms unless we're going to open it up for everybody.
Well, let me start out by saying, we don't object to consider looking up, opening up to everybody later, but we want to be cautious about how we do this because we want to make sure it works before we do a free-for-all. And it's, it's not just about the developer. It's about the residents. It's about the business. It's about our community to have a thriving downtown. And they're looking at making a huge investment down there. And one of the things that, you know, they're talking with their financial consultants about is they need some assurances that they're going to have parking for their tenants because that's one of the things that, you know, people need when, when they rent or they own a place, they have to have parking. And the equitable issue, we've tried to address that by running the pilot on Water Street to allow people that live on Water Street that are currently parking in the lot, now they can park on Water Street in front of their apartments that they own. And we, I'd like to expand that because I think it's working. I haven't had any issues with any of the landlords, the tenants, the PD or the public works. And we've been doing it now for, I don't know, a couple of months. So it hasn't really been an issue. So currently, you could argue that the people on Water Street are getting preferential treatment because they are allowed to park on Water Street overnight and nobody else is. And I think that it shows that that can work. And if we expand that, like I said, the people that are parking in the parking lot would rather park in front of their apartments, and right now, they can't because of that restriction that was mentioned earlier. So I think from an equity thing, I think that helps address the issue. And sometimes, when you're trying to promote economic development, you have to use all the tools in the toolbox in order to get these projects to the finish line. And one of the things that we're trying to do is provide affordable, walkable, bikeable housing in our community, especially in the downtown. And we have limited options that we can do that. That's why we're exploring the TIF, the historical preservation, and the parking and making this development to help promote our downtown, and it'll benefit the other businesses. If you're living downtown, you're more than likely going to go to establishment, you're going to go to the coffee shop, you might even work at one of them. So I think that, I don't see it as an equity issue because I think everybody's going to win as we evolve with, with our parking reform. That's really what we're trying to do down here, not just on the lots, but on the streets as well. Because if you think about it, why don't we allow people to park from three to five in the morning? What is, why would you do that? The only reason we could think of is it just makes it easier for them to plow snow. How many nights of the year do we have to plow snow? And if we do, we just call a snow emergency and they have to do alternate side parking anyway. So why are we inconveniencing everybody on a chance that it might snow one night in December or January, February or March? It doesn't make sense. So that's why we've been trying to look at this thing holistically, and we're not intentionally trying to, you know, create a situation where it's not equitable. I would argue that we're trying to do the opposite. We're trying to create more options for the people that are currently living downtown.
I have a question. With the three to five area, isn't that so people don't park their vehicle twenty-four seven? I mean, is, if they're, if, if you get rid of any restrictions, that means that people can park there indefinitely. And when you talked earlier about removing the restriction of two-hour parking, we just had, I don't know how many years ago, we had the downtown merchants come to us saying that they wanted a little bit more restrictions because people were parking in front of their businesses for hours and hours and hours and prohibiting customers to actually do it. So there's, I agree that we need to encourage things. I just think that we need to be a little bit more thoughtful for all the businesses and maybe have, you know, more of a study of what actually should be done that's equitable for the downtown merchants as well as the downtown residents so that the merchants get turnovers in the parking spaces so that they can have more customers and people aren't parking their cars in front of their store for weeks on end if there's no restrictions. And the people in the residence, all the residents, have access to a parking space near their homes. I mean, that's where I'm coming from. It's not that I'm against this. I'm just saying that we need to be thoughtful of the businesses, the homeowners, et cetera, and how best to structure this. And I don't know if that needs a good study, but this piecemealing is just kind of creating us versus them mentality in our community instead of something that could have been worked on as a community with kind of a good planner and kind of foresight of what the possibilities could be. And I appreciate everything you've been trying to do, but I think there might be a better way to do it that is more inclusive and honors everybody's voice than just kind of trying this and trying that and hoping something sticks and works.
So I'll just respond, and then we'll move on to the next. So what, what I mentioned that we want to do is we want to enforce more of the twenty-four and forty-eight hour parking, and we do have eight to five parking right now. So I think that minimizes the people that are going to camp there. And quite honestly, I've been driving around, I'm looking, I recognize vehicles, I talk to business owners. The biggest culprit of people that are parking there more than two hours are the business owners themselves. It's not their customers, and they know that. And when we've talked to them about that, they don't want to talk to their neighbor about moving the vehicle. They want us to do that for them, and that's a problem in the downtown. I've had numerous examples of that, and I'm not going to call them out here, but it's not people that are coming to visit. It's the employees of the business that are parking in front of their business for more than two hours, and they want us to enforce it. So, you know, we'd like to open up the dialogue and encourage them to park on the side street or in the municipal lot during the daytime because those lots are going to be available. Even the spots that they're looking at potentially leasing out will be available at the daytime. All they're looking for is to be able to use them at night when the residents come home from work, and that night, there's plenty of parking in the lot. Most of the businesses are closed anyway. So it's really the only issue we have as far as traffic is, is typically on a Saturday night when there's something at the Corus House and the Opera House. And I showed the examples that even on them nights, there's plenty of parking available. So I, I think we're trying to be equitable long-term. I think that we're planning on doing our comp plan update early, starting next year. We're also looking at updating our ordinances. Chris has mentioned that several times. I do think there's going to be an opportunity to come up with more of a comprehensive, long-term plan. But in the meantime, I don't want to see some of these developments go away because we weren't being flexible enough to accommodate them when we know that it's going to be beneficial for our community to have these projects done. Alder Jensen, you were next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to point out, if you've read the ordinance that was brought forward, there is no committee action listed. And the reason is for that is that we were not able to come to any consensus on it. You can see just by the discussion that's gone on, on the floor here just now, that this is a very decisive, maybe that's not the right word. It, 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 yes. And there's, there's so many gray areas in this. And it was, we just finally decided that after talking about it under, what, three, four meetings, just to bring it forward as it is and let the council make a decision on it. For me, the, the main thing is not so much the parking, even though that's what it, what it's about. It's about the development itself. Do you want the development to go forward? Do we feel that without this, it wouldn't? Those are the questions that I want answered. So I, I, I'm thanking you for the, for the discussion, and I hope that everybody thinks long and hard about this because, believe me, we have as a committee.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize to the council because I think I'm the person who kicked this horn its nest to start with. At the Plan Commission, when this first, when this development first came before the Plan Commission, they basically asked the city to just give them parking stalls. My response was, why would we do that? So they can raise their rents, and we basically paid for the land, and they have no, no monetary anything in the game. So this is where the idea of leasing came up. My other problem with this is a couple, a couple of things. One is, before we go into a leasing plan, and Alder Hirsch said, you know, we need to be equitable. Okay, so let's be equitable. How many unit, how many residential units are there in the Main Street area within, within the walking distance of that parking lot? We don't know, or do we? What if there are more units within that walking distance of that parking lot than there are parking stalls? So how do you be equitable? First come, first served? If you don't get one, you're out of luck. You get, you get to park way, way far away? I don't know. It's a question that hasn't been answered and needs to be answered. It's a major problem. Right now, there's no problem because it's equitable right now because everybody's got the same, same amount of skin in the game. Nobody has anything that's assigned to them, and they have to just, you know, get what they can get. Why do they need to have eighteen reserved seats, spots? If they have all this extra space in the parking lots now, why is that necessary? And then we go to, you know, Tim was saying that they, they needed assurances for parking. Well, there's a public parking lot. There's pretty much a assurance that you're going to get a parking space eventually. And then flexibility, you know, we want to be flexible. We have been flexible. Plan and Commission waived the requirement that they have to have commercial space on the first floor. The building is 100% residential. Plan and Commission made it a P, a PD, Plan Development, so that building is packed to the hilt. One, one, one commission member was questioning, why do we have eighteen units within this building? It's way, way over what's, what's normally in, in this zoning area. So have we been flexible? Have we been accommodating? I think we have. This is just one more thing. Is it, is this actually, is this, is this conversation necessary right now? Let this lie? Let them fight it out like everybody else does to get parking space? And that's where I'm at.
All right. Who wants to be first on this side? We can start, start down there and work our way down.
I agree with most of the things that Alder Jensen had to say, but also, for me, I remember voicing at our Public Safety Commission, Public Safety Committee meeting that I, I believe in affordable housing at levels, and I do agree that there are times for a preferential option for the poor. But in balance, and I wanted to speak to the fact that Stone's been growing for a while. I've been getting good coffee here for a long time. And when I first moved here, we couldn't do that back in 2006. But things were coming. And it's unfortunate that the, this current comprehensive plan, which is about to be updated and early is great, parking's not even in it. And Joanne Grassman's excellent research on page fifty-five thinks that we should try to make the downtown parking look good with good landscaping features. I haven't looked for, I haven't done a search for where else parking is mentioned in it. But I, I remember when I went to the Shirets and other meetings, early meetings on, on the blacksmith shop of what would come and when Kurt Brink first. And we all said, we're going to need more parking, we're going to need more parking. And I think we needed more parking ten years ago. I disagree with the mayor's take. I, I love your research. I'm so glad you did it, but in the lived reality, I think we're behind the eight ball on the parking, and we need to secure more. If we're going to lease more out, which I am against, and I would have voted against, but we all agreed to move this forward in the hopes that perhaps some nice changes, some things could be worked out. That was also partly why we moved this forward. And if this is exactly the same as what was at Public Safety, I'm going to vote against it. But I, I really feel that we need to try to acquire more parking and fast, and not necessarily building a parking lot. But how can we create even more? Thank you.
All right. Alder Person Butler, you're next.
I'll mostly echo what has been said. A lot of conversation around all of what's been discussed, and we couldn't come to a consensus. It just, there was no clear consensus. I agree that, you know, housing is insanely expensive right now, and there is an absolute need. So my hope is that there is not any thought that there's any hidden agendas, if there's any concern about parking that goes towards the housing because I think it's an absolute need. I know in the last Public Safety meeting that we were in, the developer, I think, was on the call and had said they were going to talk to the bank that was presenting concerns and the desire to have the reserved parking. I'd be curious to know if that has happened, if we've heard anything about that.
They're here, so when you're done, they can respond to you.
Okay. And then the only other thing I'd say is, as it relates to it being a pilot, it's really hard to unring a bell. So if we're going to do a pilot, we really need to have all our ducks in a row. Because if we find that maybe it wasn't as well thought out as we had hoped, and it causes problems, it's really hard to take something away, far more so than to give anything. Those are my thoughts. And I'd be curious here if, I don't know if we.
Sure. You want to respond to that, and then we'll continue.
Yeah, hi, everyone, again. Yeah, so based on the feedback we heard from multiple folks at the Public Safety Commission, your guys' input, we did provide a secondary option to the city through a recordable document that. that just states no dedicated parking for our project, because that seemed like the biggest hurdle to clear. It would just ensure there'd be no reduction in parking in either the municipal lots or the side streets for the foreseeable future. Because that would give our lenders the surety that there would be parking available, not dedicated, no leased stalls, but there would be the same amount of parking that's currently available, would be available going forward, for use of our tenants, for the businesses, for the folks that spoke up, for everybody, to kind of address the equitable concern.
And what did they say?
We have not heard any response on that.
So we did have some internal discussion on what that might look like, but we don't have anything prepared tonight to, you know, to present on that. We wanted to finish up the discussion we had at Public Safety, and then see how that went, and then look for direction. If you don't want us to move forward on the ordinance, this is kind of Plan B. And we talked about having to do something through a deed restriction.
Yeah, so there would be, a recordable document could work if it's structured correctly. I don't think we could do anything with the streets, but the parking lot itself, and would maybe need to flesh this out a little bit more, but one thought was, we do sort of like a deed restriction on the parking lot itself, to say for 30 years, it can't be used for any other purpose except for a parking lot. So something like that could work. But we wanted to get some, I guess, direction potentially on which way to go after the discussion tonight.
Did you have any follow-up, Alder Person Butler? Okay.
I appreciate the information that you shared.
So, a couple of thoughts. I'll try not to repeat any that have been said, but if the city were to go into a lease for these parking spaces, I'm fine with the idea of a pilot program, but like was stated before, I want to make sure that we have success metrics in place to know if it works or not, and what those would be. And if it doesn't work, how easy is it for us to just say, now we're not going to do the lease again? You know, how do we know if a pilot program is successful or not? Is it just because, you know, we made money on it, the spots were filled, we didn't get any negative feedback from the community? How do we know that works? And so I'd want to be very clear on that. On the flip side, I haven't, I don't, I don't see, I mean, and this is kind of my own experience, you know, I tend to agree with the mayor, I don't see a whole lot of parking shortages downtown. I, of course, wanted to be equitable for all businesses, but I also haven't heard any alternative solutions to increase parking. People said, well, we can build a parking ramp, or whatever. I mean, that's a huge cost, and doesn't necessarily align with our sustainability initiatives either, depending on how that goes. So, if we're going to grow, sure, we have to have parking, but we also have to have some ideas for that. And until I see other ideas come up, this is kind of what's on the table. So, you know, I'm, I'm on the fence, I hear every side of this. But I guess that's sort of where I'm at right now. But if we go ahead with it, my main thing, coming back to it, would be, what are the success metrics of a pilot program, and how easily could we renew it or not?
All right. Alder Person Caravelo. You have nothing to say?
I have.
Okay. Alder Person Pete?
I don't know where I want to start, so I'm just going to, like, pick from my notes. Well, the first question I have, Mayor, and then I have some comments to follow, is, some of these things that are being developed for the property are already going to be developed for the property. The property's already set, but this dumpster issue, I think, had brought, had come up in my last Public Safety meeting, which I'm not on the committee anymore. But is that, is that possible to happen regardless of what we decide tonight? Like, would not, would that not be in our best interest to change the location of the dumpster regardless if we're going to lease these parking stalls or not?
I'll let Plan Director Chris answer that.
So one of the, so, okay, getting back to this a little bit, but again, parking is not a requirement of the development. However, in the approvals last night, one of the requirements was to figure out the lease situation with the dumpsters, and have that in place prior to occupancy, or something along those lines. I think that it's a safety issue, after talking with some of the utility companies, quite frankly, and I, I'm shocked it hasn't been hit by a car, just trying, you know, like, trying to pull out the garbage in those scenarios, so.
So regardless of the outcome of the ordinance tonight, we, we still would pursue changing the location of the dumpster?
Yeah, so, because essentially what's going on here is, there's two very separate things going on. The first one is, is we've got the development itself.
Yep.
And this was one of the things that was going on during the development. But the secondary thing is that the developer requested parking, which we have no minimum requirement for. So we can't deny a project based on the parking. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I, I believe it also answers my question. There are a lot of things that are going to be benefits downtown with this development, whether it's shifting the way that we structure certain things on lots, or whether it's the development is something that is a beautification of downtown, new residents, new business, new monies that come in. I think that's all great. All of those things can happen without this ordinance, and I think that that's important to note. But there are also other things that this ordinance would provide that we're not necessarily locked into. So the ordinance itself states that we may, and that we have the ability to enter into leases. It doesn't mean that we have to. If the lease does not meet credible criteria, or if we don't feel that it's appropriate, you not have to enter into a lease. That gives a discretion to the city whether or not we want to do so. And if we choose to go into a lease, the lease can be terminated. There are conditions in leases that we then provide and write in, that if they are not met, then the lease is terminated. Or they are not renewed upon certain periods of time, because they're built that way, so that we can review and structure. And when we're talking about benchmarks, and about how things are going, and piloting the opportunity, then the lease can have some of those built in, without overstepping and adding them into an ordinance that might make it clunky and messy, and all that, all that other stuff. But the individual project would include certain conditions that may also be milestones, that may also be good gauges on how this worked or not. At least in terms of the residential experience for that building. Outside of that, I think when they're discussing the lease, project itself of the lease, we would need to then have the conversation of, what are we looking for? What are our goals? How are we meeting those goals? How is it impacting the community? And I agree with that. I think that we should make sure we have smart, smart goals about what we're doing. But to me, this, because the ordinance is written as it is, it is an opportunity to pursue it with other renters in the future. Ordinances also, as we've even seen tonight, can be revised and changed and updated to meet the needs of our downtown, to meet the needs of our residents. It might be a good place to start, to provide an opportunity and see where we go. I think some of the things that are designated in there are good, knowing that daytime is open, that it's designated for residents, for the residential space. Outside of that, I also will echo some comments that, in my lived experience going downtown, I have not yet seen a time that I can recall where I couldn't find a parking space, even on busy days. Now, festival days, that's different. I will admit, that to my is difficult. But when you're talking regular business days, especially when most of our businesses close at 5:00 PM, now, if they were open later, I could understand there being a problem with overlapping with residential needs, but they're not. Most of them that are not eating establishments are closed by the time that most residents are coming home. So to me, I think that this could be beneficial, but it's not necessary.
All right. Alder Person Schumacher. See if you can top that.
No, I'm going to sound like a broken record for a lot of different things on here. I mean, I, I don't think that the data supports that there is a parking issue down there. That's, I mean, if you've been down, I drive through there a couple of times, you know, in the morning, in the afternoons, at night. And again, only, only set to my approves, the challenge for everything. Having some of the, the different piloting programs in there, I think it, it is important, as Jonathan pointed out, that we've got some parameters that are set, you know, how is it working? Is it working really well? Is it failing? You know, so that we don't try and hide that it's failing. If it fails, it fails. Okay. But that, and as DJ pointed out, that that's, the, the leasing language in here is, you know, may, maze, not shells. So we do have opportunities to work with it, to do it or not do it. And then, last, Alder Hirsch had to bring up the horrible memories of parking downtown. I lived on Butler Street. It was awful. But you just, you, you parked wherever you could squeeze a vehicle in. You on purpose bought small vehicles to live down there, because they were easier to park.
Did you ever get booted?
Perhaps.
That was my favorite when I worked downtown.
Right. That's all I got on that.
All right. Isn't it Reeves?
I did have a question that you may have already answered. So if this ordinance were approved, and there was a, a lease that was under consideration, a contract, whatever, would that come to council?
Yeah, I would assume it would go through finance first, and then it would come to council. And Rick's done a little bit of prep work on that, based on some of the ideas that we've kind of tossed out there, some of them that are actually in the ordinance. And so that would be the route, ultimately, the lease would have to be approved by council, wouldn't it?
Yes, that's correct. So, I guess, just to put a point on it, I know it's been made, but this is discretionary, right? So this creates the option, it's not an obligation. So you would have, any lease would stop to come before the, the council, and if there aren't conditions in there that you like, you can vote it down, you know. So this is one decision point, and then there would be another decision point in the future if this is the direction the council chose to go. And I guess, just to throw out options, if you're looking for, I guess, alternatives, we could potentially bring the recordable document, a proposal, to the next council meeting, just to, could look into it a little bit, to see if it's feasible. Because there are some challenges regarding your authority to bind future legislatures. But we could certainly look into that, and, and try to bring something back as an alternative, if that's something that council members are interested in considering as an alternative at the next meeting. Because this is just a first reading at this point.
Yeah, and I guess my comments are, you know, I, I would be interested in learning more about the parking deed restriction. I mean, I'm, I'm encouraged that you're looking at meaning that we wouldn't lose parking. I mean, I, but I'm also like the idea that you're looking at parking as a whole, you know, the three to five. You know, I think many of you have already mentioned that, if you go to Madison, when I go to Madison, if I'm within two, three blocks, I feel like I've scored a good spot, you know? So, Stoughton has been very spoiled, lazy. I mean, I'll be frank. I would love us to look at the handicap parking, the disabled parking. Maybe we need a little bit more of that on Main Street. I live, and I sent an email to several, several of you recently, that District Two has a lot of senior citizens, Scollins over there. I have, I frequently get calls from seniors who would like to shop more downtown, but they have a difficult time finding a spot close by. So I think if we're prioritizing parking, I would like to see more parking for people who really cannot walk, rather than those who choose not to walk. But, you know, overall, I, you know, I appreciate your willingness to consider just the idea of having parking available. And I'd like to, you know, that's what I'm most interested in, parking available for the people who need it, who are there to shop, who are, you know, using the Airbnbs and living there. And with, you know, you could walk, many of us, including I know, you know, Alder Caravelo, walks or drives, or walks or bikes to Pick 'n Save. You can do that, you know? It is such a thing, folks. So I would, you know, I'm not generally in favor of encouraging close proximity necessarily more than what we have. But, you know, I, I, I guess that's where I'm at. I'd be interested in looking options for all of our citizens, and making it as equitable as we can, so.
All right. You guys want to address some of that? And then if anybody else that hasn't spoke wants to speak, certainly put your thoughts together, and you'll be on deck.
I was just going to add that personally, we're actually leaning more towards that second option, if the city thinks it's a possibility. We don't want our project to be a divisive thing among the community, and that's kind of what these last conversations have turned into. We want this to be a win-win for everybody. The reason why this is necessary is, one, due to the bank, but two, we came across RDA plans from 2020 that called for reduction of spots in that exact north lot. So it is, you know more about that than I do.
Yeah, so it just comes down to a surety that parking will still be available as is for the life of a loan. And part of the thing that I came across was the RDA plans from 2020 or 2021 that showed new commercial buildings and the plans to be built on those lots, both the north and the south. 9,000 square feet on each lot taken up, plus one half of what's available. And the same plan showed reducing street parking in order to improve aesthetics on the streets. So there's concerns over what could be done, or if another developer came in and did something with those lots, of all that could basically put a project of this size and investment upside down pretty quickly.
Thank you. Alder Person Abel.
I just have a couple of questions for you guys. One, are you planning on charging for the leased parking spaces?
That would be something that, it would depend on how much we had to pay for those stalls, so what the terms of the lease would be. You know, we're only going to get so much rent in downtown Stoughton, this isn't downtown Madison, where charging for parking is common, so most likely, we would have to eat that cost.
Because then my additional, if you do charge for parking, there's nothing stopping your residents from not using the leased spaces, and then just taking up an additional space in the lot. And then we have empty spaces that no one can park in, and that would just be my only other concern on the enforcement piece.
Sure. And again, the, the proposal for the lease, which, if we, if it even gets that far, was only for non-business hours, so, to make that clarification.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Tina, Bill, Caravelo?
There is, I, I'm not sure if that was an RDA. There was, and I'm trying to remember what the ad hoc.
I think it was a subcommittee of the RDA.
Yes. Okay, was it, was it a subcommittee?
There was an RDA subcommittee that hired consultants.
Yeah, I was on it, I was on that ad hoc subcommittee.
Yeah, and I, RDA has not done anything with that, nor will they probably. It's not really a good plan.
Yeah, that was a very.
Nebulous.
Well, I don't know if I'd say nebulous, but it was, it was just a very kind of like out there.
It was concrete, it's not.
Kind of.
I think it was something that ultimately.
Concepts that was thrown out.
I think the plan was approved, but we really haven't had any push to implement certain components of it. You know, there were things in there, like adding some trees, maybe turning the park benches, things like that.
There was, but we were not satisfied with the parking.
Downtown Merchants Association was part of that. So there were some initiatives that were in. that were in there, and I think really the one that got the most legs was the Merchants Association.
Right. And I don't think that, if I remember their conversations correctly, it's been a few years that we weren't, we were surprised about the parking because we actually wanted them to add more parking, and they kind of took it away. So it was not, it was a disappointment, to say the least, so.
Yeah, that's good to hear. It just raises the question, when we're sitting here, five years from now, in front of 12 different individuals, you know, what could happen to those municipal lots?
Yeah. There was a lot of head scratching when we saw that, and there was like, all of a sudden, structures in the parking lot, and it was like, well, where did this?
Well, I guess at this point, this is on for a first reading. I think that it was a good discussion. Everybody had an opportunity to share their thoughts. It would come back as a second reading. If you wanted to provide us some additional direction, we'd certainly be open to that. And then the question would be, do you want that additional work to come here? Do you want to go back to the committee? What would you guys like us to do? Go ahead.
First, I would like, if we could direct, you know, Attorney Matthew to figure out whatever that was called, the deed restriction, but also, yes. What was it called?
The law.
Yeah. Yeah, the recordable document. Secondly, the ordinance doesn't say anything about the parking spaces only excluded for nighttime use. It doesn't say anything about that, so it'd like.
That would be in the lease.
Right. I guess if this is truly, my concern is, if this is truly a pilot project, why do we need an ordinance? I'd rather have a well-thought-out pilot project come to us, sort of like what we did when we did added citizens to our committees, where we created a pilot, where we revisit it, you know, every couple of years and figure out if it works or not. If this is truly going to be a pilot project, I would go to that kind of format, as opposed to passing an ordinance that then we're stuck with the ordinance and it's no longer a pilot. It's a law, and that means that it can be, you know, people can apply for it.
Yeah, I think we could change the ordinance. The issue would be, is if we have an ordinance and we enter into a lease, it would be more difficult to change the lease than it would be the ordinance.
Can the council just direct staff to develop leases?
You can direct us to do whatever you want.
I know.
That's the beauty of being the policymaker, right?
And we did.
Don't, don't ask.
We did develop a potential lease. You know, we wanted to get, you know, it was a very preliminary, I guess, at this stage. So we do have a draft lease that we could provide and get input from the council on.
I guess in an awkward way, I'm asking, can we do this without having an ordinance?
Potentially. I think the thought of the ordinance was to create a framework to use it. So that's the benefit of the ordinance, I guess, is you're creating bumpers, I guess, for when you're operating. Because if there's no, like, policy framework, I guess, in mind, then the concern would just be, is it being applied arbitrarily? So it's just good to have a framework to work from.
My other thing, it seems like the developer no longer really wants this. They'd rather have the recordable, whatever it's called. So perhaps this is all mute, and it seems like we have a number of people in the downtown business district that is highly against it. So if they're not really for it, and we have, I can't remember how many people signed the petition against it, why are we going forward?
I guess I would leave it to the developers to state their preference. Maybe it's one or the other, or both.
Our preference, honestly, would just be to come to a solution that allows us to move forward, that satisfies the bank, satisfies the committee, and satisfies the community, whether that is, if Rick thinks that's achievable through the recorded document that we drafted or some form of that, some negotiable form of that. That would be our preference. But I, I'm not a lawyer, so I just don't know if that, if that works.
Sound like a politician up there.
We're just, we're just ready to move the project forward.
We've kind of followed your and the city lead on this. We're just looking for a solution. And in a perfect world, if we, if it fits what our finances require, it's just really the surety of 30 years of that parking isn't, something isn't going to happen to that lot or the south lot that affects drastically the prospects of that project itself. That would be much preferable, if it's possible. Like Dustin said, we're not lawyers. I don't know that that's possible, but I think that would be our preferred route.
Okay. At this, if I can interject, if I can make a point of personal privilege, I kind of have a little bit of an urgent situation, so if I can duck out at this point.
Yeah.
If that would be okay.
We're just about ready to wrap this up anyway, I think. But you get the last word. Is that it? All right. Have a good night. Thank you. All right. Anything else from the Alders? Unfortunately, we can't let the public speak, but this conversation's not over, so we'll have time to talk offline. So I think I'm hearing that we want to, you want us to explore the possibility of the second option? And do you want that to come back here? Do you want it to go to committee? Do you have a preference?
I think at this point, why not come back here? So we're, so these developers can get an answer. If it goes to a committee and that's another month, and then they're delayed, let's just keep this ruling and come to a, you know.
All right. So that's what we'll do, and we'll see what the feasibility of that is. If you have any thoughts about, you know, if that doesn't go forward, at least take a look at the ordinance and see what part of the ordinance specifically you think is a deal breaker, if you're not supporting it, or what we could do to improve it. In case we have to go that route, that would be appreciated. Anything else you need for direction?
No, well, I guess, the way I'm interpreting it, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, is to look into the option of doing the recordable deed restriction to allow for, basically, parking lot would remain, public parking lot for 30 years. Like, I don't, I don't want to do it in perpetuity. That's questionable, but if we put some time limit, I think it increases the legality of it, or I guess the arguments that we would have for its legality. So, but I need to do some more digging into that. But I'll look into that and bring something back for your all.
All right. You have two weeks?
Yeah.
All right.
I do have two weeks.
Thank you all for a good discussion. We'll move on to the next item, and this one is also a first reading from Public Safety, another parking thing. Alder Person Jensen.
This one's easier. Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is ordinance 10 of 2024 to amend Section 70-197, 10-minute parking, and first reading, committee approved on a 5-0 vote. You can see, there's pictures in here that explain a lot of what's going on. They're looking for, basically, it's going to be a loading zone. 10-minute loading zone is what they want to do, because they have a lot of people who are in wheelchairs or disabled, and it allows them to offload and make it, just make it more convenient for, for them. And I'm.
Yeah, you can see a couple of things on here with the yellow stripe and where the pavement is and the location of the lift doesn't always align. And the reason they want to make it a loading zone is because it's only, you know, 10 minutes here and there, and especially at night and on the weekends, they want to make sure that this available, this spot would be available for others. So that's kind of the rationale on how we landed at this one after, took a couple of meetings on this one, too, didn't it? Parking is really tricky, because, you know, originally, like, oh, do you put a dedicated stall there for, you know, a business, for maybe, you know, a couple of customers at certain times of the year? So we wanted to provide some flexibility because where the other businesses are located, it's not very likely that the average public will utilize that space because there's a hill behind it. So that's how we came up with that one. This would be back in two weeks. So if you have any other thoughts, you can reach out to Greg or I, and we can look at it some more. But I think, you know, we put our heads together, and this is what we came up with. All right. I think that's all we had on the agenda.
Mayor and President Reeves, could I ask a special directive that we put on the next council agenda?
Sure.
And perhaps the next finance meeting, if it needs to go that way, the $2,500 request for the Juneteenth?
Yep.
Being able to be withdrawn from the appropriate means necessary, whether that's the general fund or the earmark, EEI funds.
We can do that. And when you click on the link for the council rules, you'll see in there that any council member can have an agenda item put on the agenda.
Why, thank you. And I just want to make sure, though, this is time-sensitive, because if it were to be delayed beyond the month of May and into June, that would cause a problem for these monies and the payment of bills.
Okay. I'll talk to Director Ellender tomorrow, and we'll see if we can get some options.
Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mayeski, a second by Jensen. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.